Good evening, welcome to the Monday Act 46 City Council meeting. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Second item of the agendas, do you approve the minutes from the September 15th meeting?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary? Yes. Item number three is hearing of public concerns. Yes, Mr. Cox?
Steve Cox, Huntington Drive. A question for you. This is, you're going to be carrying a vote on the amended proposal for the ballot correct. I was given at the first meeting in September a copy of the proposed amendments prior to its amendment. I would like to request a copy of the amended document.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Annette Schreiner, 313 North Cherry Street. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again. I have come up with a list of questions that have not been addressed but the current proposed charter changes. What happens to the resolutions that have currently been passed by the BPA? Will they be honored, changed, voided? What is the overall impact of this proposal? It has been mentioned in the PowerPoint that this will create a more modernized and stable structure. Questions to this are, please explain modernization. Also, please explain what has truly been unstable in the current structure. What are the details of this claim? Is it because fewer candidates run? If that's the case, City Council and the mayor had the very same problem. As for retirements, are people not allowed to retire? Director turnover? Again, are people not allowed to retire, better their careers? In the PowerPoint, it claims that BMU's leadership, staff, operations will remain intact. The way I read and understand the proposed charter changes, it leaves the door open and does not necessarily guarantee the protection of the structure as it stands today. There is nothing mentioned about an engineering department or the office staff of the utility employees. What could happen to these employees if it's not defined in the charter? Will the departments be consolidated? Employees eliminated or not replaced upon retirement? Who will have control over staffing for future BMU and also removing the staff? Who will control the wages of the BMU employees? BPA has taken steps to ensure that the wages are fair and competitive. Is there a guarantee or is it just a promise? Let's talk about the organizational chart that was presented in the PowerPoint. In the proposed chart, the Director of Utilities would be on the same level as the rest of the city department heads. The Director of Utilities's responsibility is to run a utility. Should that position be more in line with the clerk treasurer in the Human Resources Department? If not, why not? With the elimination of BPA, what kind of direction will BMU get from mayor and city council? Will there be conflicts of interest between the city priorities and BMU priorities? Misaligned goals? Micromanagement. Proposed charter states that the council can create another board, as was mentioned by Councilman Betts, that this may be a possibility. Of course, this board would be appointed by mayor and/or city council, not chosen by the people who, not chosen by the people, would not be a paid position and would also save approximately $35,000. If this would happen, then why dissolve BPA? To save the money? Remove the citizen's right to choose? Questions also asked, how could the city take more money from the utility? They already get the KWH tax and free services. Could they increase the percentages of the salaries that the employees that share services with utility by making the BMU pay more and the city less? Could more people be added? The cost of redundancy was mentioned in the PowerPoint. It is stated that Director of Utilities has to present yearly budget twice, attend multiple meetings, and duplicate content reports. Claims that it slows projects and adds confusion in the separate meetings with the business developers. With the current structure, why haven't there been more combined meetings with BPA if this is an issue? When submitting duplicate reports, if they're not rewritten, why not just do an email? Slows projects, adds confusion? If this is the case, find out where the bottlenecks are and correct them going forward. As for confusion, do the angles change? Is there a lack of communication that needs to be addressed? If I was a business developer, I would like to meet everyone I could be possibly working with in order to start those, building relationships. Are the meetings not planned in advance so everyone can attend? My final point, if I have these questions, how many more are there? These questions need to be answered with clarity before this goes up for vote to the citizens and the ratepayers of Bryan. I am hoping that the mayor and city council would not want to misinform, mislead the voters and the employees BMU by not telling a complete, well-thought-up plan, not just make one up as we go along. So I'm asking for a motion to table this ordinance until all questions are answered. Let's not pass an ordinance without making sure that the mayor, city council, BPA, BMU have been able to discuss proposed changes. Let's allow the opportunity for all parties involved to come up with a viable, fair plan going forward. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, people.
I believe the following facts are important to repeat tonight, so I'm going to say some things that you might have heard before, but I think they're all important to reiterate. Let's talk facts, why dissolving the BPA is not the answer. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight, not just as an elected member of the Board of Public Affairs, but also someone who deeply values transparency, accountability, and long-term health of our city utilities. Recently, a presentation was shared outlining reasons to dissolve the BPA. I'd like to respond directly to those points, not with emotion, but with facts, experience, and a commitment to truth. Let's begin with the claim that Bryan has the last remaining elected BPA in Ohio. That may be true, and it's something to be proud of. In other cities, board members are appointed by the mayor and approved by council. That means political influence can shape who oversees your utilities. In Bryan, you, the voters, decide. That's democracy in action, and it's worth preserving. Next, the budget. BPA is budgeted to $62,700 for 2025, but actual costs will range from $30,142 to $32,295. That's a modest investment for a board that brings over 100 years of combined utility experience. We don't receive benefits, just a stipend for each meeting. If a committee replaces us, it may not be paid. But if council members take on these duties, will they be compensated? If so, the supposed savings disappear. The ordinance proposes transferring utility oversight to the mayor and council. But oversight isn't just about attending meetings, it's about understanding the complexity of the utility operations. Our board includes three former BMU employees and two current utility professionals. That depth of knowledge cannot be replicated overnight. We're told that BMU's staff and operations will remain intact, but where's the guarantee? History tells us that consolidation, attrition, and budget cuts often follow structural changes. Who will advocate for fair wages for BMU employees? Who will ensure that utility funds paid by ratepayers aren't redirected to unrelated city expenses? Regarding budget presentations, yes, the Director of Utilities prevents to both BPA and council. Could meetings be streamlined? Absolutely. That's a procedural fix, not a reason to dismantle an entire board. BMU and the city operate from two separate budgets, ratepayer, funds, first tax, revenue. Combining oversight risks blurring that line. We've heard that duplicate reports and meetings slow projects. If that's true, let's identify the bottlenecks. It's unclear direction, changing scopes, interdepartmental delays. These are solvable issues, not structural flaws. And when it comes to business development, having both BMU and city representatives at the table is a strength, not a weakness. Finally, the question, again, why now? Yes, vacancies are hard to fill, but that's true of many elected positions. Let's ask, how are we encouraging civic engagement? Are we posting openings? Are we educating citizens about the role of the BPA? As for modernization, let's unpack that. Modernization means cloud services, cybersecurity, automation, and strategic planning. The BPA already supports these goals. We've helped guide investments in infrastructure and technology. So dissolving the board doesn't modernize anything, it just centralizes control. And accountability? That's already happening. Our employees take ownership. Our board sets clear goals. We support our teams and provide regular feedback. If there are gaps, let's fix them together, not dismantle a system that's working. In closing, I ask you to consider this. The BPA is local, experienced, and focuses solely on utilities. We are elected by the people, accountable to the people, and committed to serving the people of Bryan. Let's not trade that for uncertainty. Let's improve what we have, not erase it. Thank you.
Good evening. Phil Metz, resident of Bryan most of my life since 1970. Mr. Hoopie challenged at one of the last meetings to get the facts. History does repeat itself. The issue to abolish BPA is not new. Multiple administrations have tried to convince council to let the people decide and placed on the ballot in which the citizens of Bryan voted no to abolish BPA. Started back in 1964 to 1977. 1967, Mayor Williams administration put it on the ballot. 61% voted, leave it alone, we're not going to abolish BPA. Under Mayor Runkel, it was put on the ballot three times, 1970, '72, and '73. It failed 61.7, 51.2, 68.2. And those were ballot years both in May and November, in which only 20% to 37% of the voters voted, based on the registered voters for the city of Bryan only. Mayor Slate has attempted to get this on the ballot twice now, once in 2020, and obviously council listened and followed through and didn't put it on the ballot. We're now back to the same situation of appointing three members from BPA to a council. From 1941 to 1999, I can find record of 10 different charter review committees, the last one being 1999, in which recommendations were made by people outside of the city of Bryan, members of the community, people that are in elected positions even, and they made recommendations to council at that time what to do. And council acted on nothing. On September 28th, at the BPA special meeting, the mayor referenced Napoleon, Ohio, and compared it to BPA and BMU. We're now comparing apples and oranges. Napoleon's electric is purchased through Ample, Ohio. They have no generation, they have no solar, they have no hydro. They're basically negotiating a rate at whatever they can get, and that's whatever they're buying off the grid. Napoleon's electric department only maintains lines and transformers, they do no other work, no other services. They have no control over peak shaving, like the city of Bryan does, which I heard at one of the meetings I attended, saved the city of Bryan over $5 million. The governments are totally different. Bryan has a mayor-council government. The mayor's elected, the council's elected. Napoleon's BPA's appointed three members, but they also have a hired city manager. That has been brought before the council before and before the voters before and was voted down, because it was decided that in order to hire a city manager, it was going to be somewhere around $160,000 to $200,000, depending on the qualifications of the applicant. There are 57 cities that fall into the same type of government as Bryan. I picked the closest ones, Bryan, Defiance, Waterville, and Waseon. Bryan is the only one that offers generation power. All of the others are purchasing power from an outside source or off the grid. The mayor states there's no money grab. They can't spend utility money to cover city expenses, like the police department. Unfortunately, the kilowatt tax originally, when it was originated, 100% of it got back into the BMU's funds. Somewhere along the line, the council decided, we need a share of that, and it got split 50/50. And it may have been split some other ways, but I didn't go that far. Today, 100% of that kilowatt tax comes back to the city of Bryan's general fund. It's utility money that you're spending on expenses other than utilities. By my estimates, I think we're probably talking somewhere around 3/4 of a million dollars or more. John can verify that later. BMU is transparent with their operations, services, expenses, incomes, published annually. The city of Bryan is not as transparent, and I've yet to find a similar report broken down by budgets departments in a five-year comparison. BMU supplies every city building free of charge, electric, water, and internet, and probably whatever other maintenance needs to go along with that if a new building's built. That is being funded by the ratepayers, and as I shared before as a resident, Merry Christmas daily. BMU has a five-year plan as a result of BPA's oversight. I've yet to hear a long-range planning or seen anything published from the Bryan City Council or the current administration. The question was asked, what's the cost to bring it on the ballot? Based on my previous ballot research, it's going to cost $6,000 to $10,000. Postage has not gone down, paper has not gotten less expensive, and labor prices have not gone down. In October 2017, the candidates, when there was actually elections going on, when we had multiple people running for office, met at seasons, and the question was posed, past conversations, do we need BPA? Do we need city council? Do we need to join them all together into one big happy family? Not have a mayor or have a city manager and a mayor? Three of you participated in that conversation.
Mr. Metz, you've gone past your five minutes. Can you wrap it up, please?
I am. I have just a few statements here. The first time, understanding along BPA and council working closely together, we saw the North Industrial Park. My understanding is, without BPA's direction and funding, that park wouldn't happen. And as I'm also told, once development starts process, instead of 100% of those funds coming back to the Bryan Municipal Utilities, the city of Bryan's going to get a cut of those sales, even though they furnish all the infrastructures. For the first, excuse me. Issues come from council, BPA, BMU, are an enterprise side funded through the services of the city while the city is funded through tax dollars. It's difficult to have those kind of monies to do things we need to do, taking apples and oranges in enterprise versus tax dollars and combine them. Another person responds with simple and sweet, why mess with anything, my, excuse me, quoted, why mess with something that is working? Sounds like a suggestion that came from someone that caught me in the aisle at Chief's supermarket. I'm not going to go through the rest of this since I'm short on time. With that history of what the people want and their past voting history, and the feedback that I've heard from the residents of Bryan through multiple sources in meetings I've attended, should this council pass the administration's request to put the ordinance to eliminate BPA on the May 2026 ballot, when it fails as it has in the past? Council's responsible for the stewardship of the residents' tax dollars. I trust each of you will step up and surrender your stipend until the election costs are reimbursed.
Yes.
I also have one other question. We've obviously been given a marked-up copy of the charter. There are probably some amendment things that have happened from this charter prior to this. If this would go before the voters and pass, the last document that I was given, is that exactly what's going to happen? Or will previous things with amendments supersede the things that weren't updated in this document?
Good job. I don't, I...
In this document, if you haven't read it from cover to cover, I have found some things that I know there have been some, I don't want to say ordinance resolutions or amendments, however you want to put it, that didn't get incorporated in here of the way things are today.
Ordinances don't supersede the charter. So the fact there's an ordinance, it must comply with the charter, and it does not supersede and cannot amend the charter by itself.
Okay. Let me ask this question. Council voted themselves an increase in their stipend. Would that have been handled through an ordinance, a resolution, or an amendment?
That would be an ordinance.
And they don't affect the charter?
The charter is like the Constitution. It sits there static until it's amended.
So if this is republished, as it is written today, it'll go back to as it's printed?
So I think I get where you're going. There's, in the ordinance, or I'm sorry, charter, which I had asked the former city attorney about, it says in there that council members will be paid $25 per meeting. BPA, I think, also might have that stipulation, but there have been ordinances passed over, I don't know how long, to increase that per-meeting rate. Is that where you're going?
You've got it.
Okay.
So my question is, is if this goes before the voters and it passes, council's stipend will go to $25?
No.
As it's written in this charter?
You're doing two or three things at once there. No, the answer is no.
Okay. Then why wasn't this updated to reflect what it is today, since it's a new document?
It's not a new document.
It's an amendment to a document that exists, has been marked up.
Sir, it's a proposed amendment.
Okay. If it goes before the voters and passes, which it's not going to, it becomes a new document?
No, it becomes an amended document.
Okay. I'm not going to play the game. All I'm saying is, the document I have before me says that this council and BPA, which would be eliminated if it would pass, stipend is $25. I don't want to come back to here and find out that somebody says, well, we're not going to pay $25 because we voted ourselves a $300 stipend per meeting for 26 meetings a year. The document needs to reflect what today is. It's being updated, amended, however you want to say it. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the work. I appreciate you staying up for us people.
Do you know, like, if that's something we need to change?
Not to my knowledge. I can look at it, but again, there are different ways that the boards are paid.
I thought ORC let it be adjusted by ordinance, but I could be wrong, because I'm not, I probably asked about it six years ago, the last time.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Holbrook Beavers. I live at 1117 South Portland Street in Bryan. Tonight, I would like to address the proposal to amend our city's charter that would dissolve the Bryan Board of Public Affairs. I heard the mayor give a presentation recently titled "Modernizing Bryan's Government." Her presentation stated that she would like to modernize Bryan by changing the city's charter and dissolving the Bryan Board of Public Affairs. I'll mention a few of her reasons, and some have already been mentioned here tonight. The mayor said that we are the last remaining elected Board of Public Affairs amongst all cities in Ohio. We are not the only city in Ohio that has a board that manages their public utilities. Cities like Bowling Green, London, Orville, Seville, Pickwa, Pleasant Hill, the Village of Arlington, and Napoleon have utility boards. We are the only city in Ohio that allows its citizens to elect this board. The mayor said that it is getting harder to get people to run for the board's seats. The same could be said for your jobs. There's three open seats, all running unopposed, the same as the Board of Public Affairs. The mayor said that the cost is a factor and that the BPA is currently budgeted at $62,700. The actual spend is $30,000 to $33,000 annually. With over 6,000 ratepayers, the average cost per ratepayer is less than $1 per year. Most people, I think, if asked, would be happy to pay that $1 annually to have an independent board represent their utilities. In 1993, Norman Crampton wrote a book titled "The 100 Best Small Towns in America." He picked two cities from each state, and Bryan was one of the two cities picked for Ohio. Salina was the other town. Recently, Bryan was recognized as one of Ohio's best hometowns for '24 and '25 by Ohio Magazine. The article listed the highlights for Bryan as "community spirit, business environment, and local amenities." Certainly, if Bryan were old-fashioned or behind the times, we would not have received these important designations. I hope the residents of Bryan see the value in the Board of Public Affairs. This board was established 119 years ago in 1906. This is an independent, focused board that is appointed by the mayor, that is not appointed by the mayor. The current board has over 100 years of utility experience. My husband and I emailed our city councilperson, Mr. Osppa, and the at-large councilperson, Jim Cosumpleg, today stating our opposition to this action. Council members, I hope that you have tried to talk to the residents in your wards to find out their thoughts on this action, and I hope that you will share those findings with us tonight and the ratio for and against. If you came here to just rubber stamp what you've been asked to do, then you're not doing your jobs. I would also like the council to answer the following question. Why now? How will the council manage our utilities would be the second question. And the third question, why does the council think they can manage our utilities better than the BPA? Bryan Municipal Utilities is managed by the Board of Public Affairs. Bryan Municipal Utilities is reliable, local, and yours. Thank you.
Mayor, may I make a comment?
Absolutely.
I guess I have to ask the council president, sorry.
Ms. Beavers, in response to your question?
Yes.
You are the only person who has given me any negative towards this at all. Everybody I have spoken to, and I've spoken to numerous people, have all felt that this is a good move and have encouraged me to vote in support of it. So you asked that question of me?
I appreciate your answer.
So to let you know, I did ask, I have asked around, and I've been approached by people.
Good.
And some are not all of my ward, but I have been approached, and that has been the consensus, is that this is a good move, and have encouraged me to vote accordingly.
I appreciate that, Mr. Osppa.
You're welcome.
I think you should quantify that, though, not just give generalities. I know in the past...
In quantifying, how would you like quantities, please?
Numbers? Isn't that what that means?
Well, you're one in regards to the negatives.
Why not this two?
And, no, I have, no, you are the only one who has spoken to me in regards to this. I have not seen your email, so I can't respond to that. But you're the only one who has spoken to me in regards to it. In regards to those who have spoken positively towards it, approximately 15 people.
Okay, great. Then you should vote with the mayor.
Are you just not listening to the next two?
I know in the past, when, like, for example, the change with the garbage pickup, you know, Mary said, yeah, I had a couple people that talked to me and they really liked the change. I don't feel that that's a complete appropriate response.
If I could? A gentleman asked a question. I wanted to answer his question, if that's okay. He asked about the $25 compensation for both council and the Board of Public Affairs. I would invite the gentleman to read Section 3.03 of the Charter, where it reads in the pertinent part, the compensation, but not to exceed 36 meetings, $25 per meeting attended, but not to exceed 36 meetings in each calendar year. The compensation...
I know in the past, when, like, for example, the change with the garbage pickup, you know, Mary said, yeah, I had a couple people that talked to me, and they really liked the change. I don't feel that that's a complete appropriate response.
If I could. A gentleman asked a question. I wanted to answer his question, if that's okay. He asked about the $25 compensation for both council and the Board of Public Affairs. I would invite the gentleman to read Section 3.03 of the charter, where it reads in the pertinent part, the compensation, but not to exceed 36 meetings, $25 per meeting attended, but not to exceed 36 meetings in each calendar year. The compensation of the members of council and the Board of Public Affairs may be increased or decreased by ordinance or resolution, and then it quantifies when that can happen. But it is in the charter already, so you're, the thought that that is capped by the charter is not correct, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Can you repeat that section again, please, 30?
3.03.
Is it appropriate for me to wear the hat, or should I take it off? I don't want to.
You're fine.
I'll wear it just because I'm a believer in BMU, so. First of all, I'd like to say to council, thank you for giving us three readings. You had the opportunity not to do that, but you saw value in doing that, and I applaud you for that. Like everyone here, in my heart, what's best for Bryan? And I, given my heart to this cause, I listened, and everyone that I listened to in the public, I never gave my opinion. I listened. People come up to me, just like you said earlier, grocery stores, churches, pickleball courts, tennis courts. Steve, you mentioned, the majority of the people said they're for this. Great, okay.
Absolutely.
I'm happy for that. The majority of people I listen to, 25 to 50, don't share that opinion, okay? And that's, that's how, that's how a democratic society works.
Very much so.
And I agree. That's good. This is not, what you're hearing is, it's not enclosed to what the people are talking. And they're not saying this, they're just telling me, again, like I said before, they are not supporting this. And I'm not talking about a select few people that I know, friends, people that, I'm talking about people just out of the blue that would come up to me and talk to us, say, hey, you know, we don't believe in this. Can you honestly say that on this council here, that you talked to people that were not friends, or acquaintances, or somebody that you had influence over? I listened to 25 to 50 people that did not even know who I was, but they saw my picture in the paper, they knew I was involved, the BPA, and they came up and talked. And when they did, two or three people next to them would say, hey, I have the same thoughts Again, I say you have a great responsibility here. Do not make it your personal agenda. Thank you.
Okay, with that, we will go to item number four in ordinance. John, please number and read.
So a reminder that this is the third reading of, third reading as amended of ordinance number 43, 2025, an ordinance placed on the ballot for electoral consideration, amendment to the charter of the city of Bryan to dissolve the elected Board of Public Affairs and to bring the Bryan Municipal Utilities under the direction and supervision of the Bryan mayor and Bryan city council.
Any discussion?
No, I think it's just to be clear, this vote is to let the voters of Bryan decide how they want to be governed. It was and is that, it was six years ago, it still is now. I don't know how you predict such an issue. I don't use a toke board. I hear a lot, both ways, on a lot of different issues. The issue still falls with us to use our best judgment, and at least my best judgment says that the people need to decide how they want to be governed. I don't think that's a bad thing. I think that starts with our Constitution, and I believe it very strongly. So I think the citizens need to decide if they want one governing body versus, or governance board versus two, or, and if they do, they vote yes. If they don't, they vote no, and we move on. It's not a difficult issue in my mind as it relates to questions about why now? Why not now? And if not now, when? So I, I think that the issue needs to be brought up, dealt with, and then we need to move on. And I'm fine moving on either way it goes. With that said, this is the third reading. Was there any other thoughts as to any other amendments or anything, or do we want to just proceed?
I just want to say it's not a rubber stamp for me. I know the last time when this came up in 2020, and I'm not going to put a figure on it, that I had people tell me after we voted it down that they would like to have had a choice to decide what to do rather than the council deciding for them. Again, it's not a rubber stamp.
So with.
Can I just, I just kind of want to go back to a couple of the things regarding the Director of Utilities and HR. That was an org chart I got from BMU, and so they had never taken that HR position off, and it wasn't an edible document. So that HR is actually, the citywide HR is under the clerk treasure. So that won't be something equal to the Director of Utilities, just to claim there. And as far as the kilowatt hour tax, Ohio revised code, Section 572781 specifically says, "If the electric distribution company serving the self-assessing purchaser in a municipal electric utility and the purchaser is within the municipal corporation's limits, payment shall be made to such municipal corporation's general fund, and reports shall be filed in accordance to Division A4..." So it is right in Ohio revised code that that kilowatt hour tax goes to the city's general fund, not to the electric department. I did sidebar with Mr. Leonard, and as we have sold acreage out in the industrial park, that goes back to the city's, the BMU electric department, because they are the ones that purchased that property. So.
Yeah, control.
No. And the other thing I do want to say is that this is.
Excuse me, can you, excuse me, ma'am, can you control yourself, please? Thank you.
I just feel like Jesus, I'm walking on wires. I'm sorry, sorry.
Please, control yourself, thanks.
And this is no way in any attempt to sell the electric like it was in 1997. Again, it is how you want to be governed. BMU will still exist no matter what happens with this. And again, part of the why now, I mean, the BPA decided that there would be no internet and cable. I'm not disagreeing with that, but they're no longer in those network contracts, they're no longer doing those negotiations, so they are electric, water, fiber.
Sewer?
Look.
No.
Yeah, they have a solar plant, they have generation, yes, ma'am. They absolutely do.
And the sewer?
The sewer is actually under this body.
Let's get back to.
Sorry.
Council here. The, one thing that I heard, I just looked on at the note, and I've heard it now twice, and I want to address it. No to the question of, so if you, if this goes under you, council, will you end up getting a, voting for an increase? No, and no, we can't anyway. It's, my understanding from the last increase was it needs to be done at a certain time so that you're not voting for you to get the increase. So that was, that's part of the reason that it's not going to happen. The other part is, is I don't speak for everybody, but I personally would not accept anything more for the role, the additional role. I don't see it as that much more work. I attend well over 70% of the BPA meetings. They're run well, they're good people, they're dedicated people, and they should be thanked for their service. In the same sense, of those eight years of me attending literally hundreds of meetings, I would have voted 99% of the time exactly the way they did because of the BMU management is so good. When I listen to their presentations, they cover all the bases and, and they are an absolute gem. So BPA should be thanked for, for the service they provided over the years, currently and past, and potentially future as well. And BMU is a gem, and I do want to also point that out, that the issue in '67 was discussed with my father and I at the supper table when I was a junior in high school, and he said, under no circumstances was he going to vote to get rid of the electric company. And I said, well, I thought there was another part, and he goes, oh, that doesn't matter. I am not getting rid of the elec. The best thing that Bryan, this is what he said, the best thing Bryan has, one of the best things, actually, because he mentioned the rec. department, one of the best things that Bryan has going forward is its control over its own utilities, rates, and quality of service. And I can't, I can't agree more with that statement. So from my perspective, I believe that we need to go forward with letting the people decide how they want to be governed, because that's what the issue is. It's not BMU, it's how do you want to be governed? If you want two governing issues, fine. If you don't, fine. And with that said, if there's nothing else, I will make them, or is there something else? I'm sorry.
Well, I was just going to basically support some of the things that have already been said. In my, going through my ward, my experience has been very similar to yours, Steve, in that I don't have the numbers that you have do, but, and I didn't tally mark any, how many.
That was a quick recall here.
Yeah. Basically, somewhere around six would be, six people questioned the need for BP, BPA, and one was adamant about, we need to have BPA. Now, the person that approached me with, about being very adamant about keeping BPA was an older gentleman that I've known for a very long time, and apparently, the perception was back in the '60s when that took place, that there was a lot of corruption involved with that, and, or at least perceived corruption. I don't know the facts, but, so that was his main reason, was he thought that there would be a lot of corruption. I support what John said about our utility and that we do have a blessing there. I've been under the other available utility, and just the, the lower rates and the service and everything that we get, it is absolutely a blessing. So the idea that we would want to, to try to get rid of the utility or sell it off to somebody, I would fight that tooth and nail. The other thing that, that I do want to bring up is, and it's been said a couple of times about it being a democratic society, and whether the people support it or not, and for that reason, you know, this is the second time we're dealing with this in six years, so, or five years, or whatever it is. And let's leave it up to the people, then it's asked, answered, and we move forward. And that's, that's kind of where I'm coming from. I don't want to have to deal with this all the time. Let's, let's look at it, let's let the people decide, and I am fine with whatever direction things go. This is not, this is not something that's personal for any of the people that are involved with BPA, and this, this is something that has come up. Let's take a look at it and see what the people want. And that's got a question back there.
Is it ready to ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so let's say this goes to the voters, and they decide to.
We can't hear you. We cannot hear you.
Oh, I am sorry. I just have a question. I got to get a little bit of a backstory here. So let's say this ends up going, you guys decide to pass this, it goes to the voters. Voters, again, decide to not demolish, abolish BPA and decide to keep it for whatever umpteenth time this has been through. When are you guys just going to stop bringing it up? You just mentioned.
I can only speak for myself, but I would be, I would be against bringing it up anytime soon, that's for sure.
I'd be the same way, just because the last time it was, why didn't you let us decide?
Like I say, it would be asked and answered, and I don't think we want to berate the people of Bryan with every time they go to the ballot, they're voting on the same thing.
Mr. Metz here brought it up, how many times has it been defeated?
Well, that's not quite accurate. In the '70s, there were three votes. The votes were dealing with the ratio of council to BPA. Those all went down. The only one, the only, I have a 750-page history of BMU here that I've read twice. The only time that it went down was in '67, when it was coupled with the electric, getting, abolishing the electric piece. To answer your question from me, you already heard it from two or three, no, no. I brought it up six years ago, thought it was a good idea because of a number of folks that had approached me, and then I went to the BPA meetings. I felt as though, yep, they had some value in terms of questioning and necessity, so I brought it up. I would have no plans on bringing it up again, to answer your question. The issue is, I will repeat for, I don't know how many times, but I'll continue to repeat it. It's about the people having the ability to make that choice. And we have the next six or seven months to state, here are the facts, here's what's going on, and I want to go back to that issue of being careful, I think Dick, the last time, I think it's a very good one, be careful with what you hear and read. People that talk to me don't always agree with me, and I don't agree with them, but when we split, we know where we're both at, and we trust that information. Be careful with the information as to who you trust, but to answer your question clearly and slightly, no. This needs to be addressed, I don't know about once and for all, but it's been, what, 59 years since it was brought up at all, and that's when it was coupled with the electric. The last time it was really brought up was in 1906, when we were a village, and it passed to only have one. So that history has a lot of, a lot of different various, variables to it. So we're living it now, let's ask the question, and let's live with the results. And I can, and I believe we all can, live with the results. There's no hard feelings at all, either way it goes.
Okay. I mean, I just want to make it clear that, you know, that it, you know, I guess, once they, if it goes to pass this ordinance, whatever, that, that this decision's made, and everybody, you know, like, three years from now, if, whatever.
No, not.
And say, oh, let's try this again, kind of thing. So that's all the other comment I'm wanting.
Yeah, I'm assuming I will still be here in three years, and I will tell you I will not be for putting it back on the ballot.
No, I'm assuming I'll be here in three years. We need to move on with the meeting.
Yes.
If the public part is over.
Yeah, I just took her question because she's part of the BPA.
Yes.
That's the one reason why I took her question.
So if there's no further discussion, I would make the motion that we adopt, motion, is it 43? I want to make sure I get it right. I want to make sure I get it right, that we approve number forty-three, right?
Yes, ordinance number forty-
Ordinance number forty-three.
And I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Item number five in ordinance, John, please number and read. Ma'am, please, please, maintain yourself.
I'm having a hard time hearing her, and I'm sitting right next to her.
Sorry.
Ordinance number forty-five, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the City of Brian for month ending October thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. As council knows, I try and bring these about quarterly. These are, each one of the items in this transfer request were a part of the original budget, and these transfers were a part of what would be necessary for the seeding funds to continue to operate as, as budgeted in twenty twenty-five. So nothing new, nothing changed, the numbers correspond to what you all passed in the original twenty twenty-five budget. I'll probably be back in December for the final set of transfers, and if those numbers are adjusted at that time, I'll let you know.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Item number six is an ordinance, John, please number and read.
Ordinance, ordinance number forty-six, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number one, and final, for the project known as twenty twenty-five asphalt program.
Fourth quarter of the year, we're winding down a few construction projects. So the first one is a final change order for the asphalt program. It was a deduct, forty-five thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-five cents, bringing the project six forty-four, six ninety, thirty-five. Just balanced out a few quantities. I was talking to Rick before the meeting, and he said he's always surprised to see a decrease. And I said, well, we always round up a little bit on the bid projects, because you always want to have little contingencies built in there. So with that, I would request you suspend the rules and approve this change order, so we can get this closed out and keep on going for the year.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
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 And I'll move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Item number sevens in ordinance, John, please number and read.
Ordinance number forty-seven, twenty twenty-five, an ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to issue change order number one, and final, the project known as twenty twenty-five pavement parking program.
Same thing on this, ten thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollar deduct. Final cost, one twenty-eight, six thirty-seven, sixty-five. These streets were, the main reason for this deduct is these streets were striped with the asphalt program. So we decreased them from this bid project. So I would request you suspend the rules and authorize this change.
I move to suspend and appreciate both deductions, thank you.
Yes, I'll second that.
John?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
And I'll move to approve.
And I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, it's a building permit.
Counsel, we are asking for you to approve a building permit, and if you do approve it, we will need you to stick around and sign that this evening. It is for Amtrak. Contractor is George Allen Construction. Construction cost is approximately four point six million. Again, this is not city funds.
Excuse me, ma'am. Ma'am, do you have a problem? Should we escort you out? Just go ahead and go. Thanks, Fruski, Chief Fruski. I'm sorry, ma'am.
We know who she is. Anybody?
Sorry about that, Mary.
No, it's okay. So again, this is for a three hundred and fifty-foot platform with a shelter that will be all in, closed, air-conditioned, ADA compliant with restrooms, and again, an ADA compliant platform. They are currently working in this area, they have just started to, sorry, the screen went out, dig the, the platform foundation area, if you've been out there recently.
I have, I drove by, it looks good.
I'm sorry.
I drove by, it looks good, it looks nice.
No, it does, and I was just curious, is there any, because it is such a large project, is there any, was there any requirements to use?
Local contractors?
Yes.
So not a requirement, but it's my understanding that some of the local contractors did get some of the work. I think their electrical is done local. They were, they came and visited us about a year ago from Illinois, and they did kind of ask for a list of names of local contractors to see if they couldn't be in contact with those. They did really want people on site from the area that were familiar with the area.
Well, I figured since it was more, more, I'm going to say federal, maybe.
Yeah, no, it is, it's absolutely federal.
It's more federal related, it's not a requirement, but I did want to know, could, it looked like there was a couple of local contractors that I saw.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah, the attempt was definitely made by the contractor.
Do we have any kind of an idea of a completion date?
No, best guess is sometimes in the next one to three years. Some of it is because once they get into the meat of the construction, they have to go seventy-five feet off the platform, twenty-five feet, how far is that, do you remember? It's a distance, where they have to take all their material, their persons and everything when a train's coming in, and we get about sixty to seventy trains in a twenty-four-hour period through Brian. So it's going to take them a very long time. They've got flaggers for Amtrak and Norfolk Southern down there daily, letting them know when they need to move all their stuff back.
Okay, so that, I saw them out there flagging one day, and-
Yeah.
Okay.
So it'll be a painfully long process for them, but we're still really excited about it, because again, several years ago, they called to reduce our, their footprint, and we were able to convince them that we needed the station. So it's a pretty exciting project for everybody. So with that, I would ask for a motion to approve the building permit.
So moved.
I'll second.
Steve?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Absolutely.
Yes.
All right, item, that includes all the items on the agenda. We'll go around the room. Mayor, do you have anything? John? Department heads? Chief, you have something?
I'm going to make one quick statement.
Is it a burn issue?
Yeah, we're going to get right to that. It is leaf season, as we know, it's honest. It is illegal to burn leaves in the City of Brian. And do not ruin that beautiful new asphalt that they just put down, please. And if you're outside and you are having a small campfire, please stay with it. We've had a couple of instances where folks have left, and then we have to go out and put that fire out for them, and I don't want to do that. So it is hot, it is dry, and we are in fire season, so be careful.
Thank you. Any other department head? With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Steve?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
And Mary?